Sigur Cigotin.
President.
Mayor Protim Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo. And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Y'all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you all for being here this evening. Get away with some announcements. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, August 26, 2025, 6:00 PM, here in the chambers. At this time, we will take items from citizens present. However, if you hear us speak about something that is on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up. This time, we take anybody, please state your name and your cause.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Brian Nazare. I already broke something. That was impressive. Anyway, yeah, I just wanted to take some time out of my day. I know I've been before you guys, before in the past, asking for stuff. Today, that's not what it's about. I actually just came to say thank you as a citizen for the job well done, getting the pickleball courts up and going. I know there's been a lot of people enjoying it. I myself, I've had a couple times to go play, hopefully many more. And again, I just wanted to come up and say thanks. I'm sure you guys get a lot of negative feedback and not a lot of thank yous, a lot of asks, so I just figured it might be nice to hear a thank you for once in a while, so.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoy.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the business. Item 6A, deliberate and act on approval of the July 22, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Minutes were given to you in advance. If there are no additions or corrections, they will stand approved as presented. Any corrections, anything wrong? Not meeting minutes stand approved. Thank you. Item B. Public hearing, debate, and act on ordinance 10-. Let's start that again. Public hearing, deliberate and act on ordinance 1032, repealing ordinance number 1013 pertaining to the adoption of Rammel Family Farms LLC as an economic development project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is ordinance 1032, which proposes to repeal ordinance 1013 that pertains to the adoption of Rammel Family Farms Limited Liability Corporation as an economic development project. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this act.
Comments, questions? This was presented a couple meetings back. Public hearing. Public hearing now. If anyone wants to make a comment, if not, we will be taking action.
I think it's worth noting to the public that the termination date was agreed upon with Rammel Family Farms and is December 31, 2025.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-47. Sorry. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 1032, repealing ordinance number 1013 pertaining to the adoption of Rammel Family Farms LLC as an economic development project.
Motion and a second to adopt. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Ray, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigur Cigotin.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster.
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
All right. Moving on to item C. Now we can do the dash stuff. Deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-47, supporting the future interstate highway formula program. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is Resolution 2025-47, which supports the future interstate highway formula program. This resolution seeks to ensure Raton's inclusion in future federal and state funding for interstate development, which would benefit transportation infrastructure in the region. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this item.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a comment if I will, if I may.
Sure.
I can't talk either. So this, all, this resolution and the next two pertain to the federal government and getting funding for all the Ports to Plains Alliance and as they rewrite the Federal Highway Act or law, whatever it is that they need to do. So we, as an alliance, they've asked us to support not only a funding formula for interstate highways across the nation, which would be awesome to have that in place so that there's an automatic funding formula, but also for some different designations along the entire corridor, of which Raton already has some of those designations for New Mexico, but some of the other states along the corridor, all the way up to the north don't have those yet.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Enter the motion.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-47, supporting the future interstate highway formula program.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-47. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-48, supporting the future interstate feasibility study for Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Express, and a portion of Ports to Plains High Priority Corridor. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is Resolution 2025-48, which supports the future feasibility study for the Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Express, and portions of the Ports to Plains High Priority Corridors. This study will help assess the viability and potential of these highways becoming key interstate routes, benefiting regional and transportation connectivity. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this item.
Questions, comments? There is no monies committed by the city to this. Just wanted to point that out. Usually with feasibility studies, they're wanting something. At this time, anyway, there's no money associated with it.
That's a good thing.
Any other comments, questions?
I will move to approve Resolution 2025-48, supporting the future interstate feasibility study for Heartland Express, Theodore Roosevelt Express, and a portion of the Ports to Plains High Priority Corridors. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-49, supporting future interstate designation for Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Expressway, a portion of Ports to Plains High Priority Corridors, and numbering future interstate segments. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, differentiating between the previous one, this one is for the designation as, and not a feasibility study. So it's the future interstate again for Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Expressway, and portions of Port to Plain. This resolution also addresses the assignment of future numbering, for which will promote long-term development and inclusion on the interstate system. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this item.
Comments, questions?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-47, supporting future interstate designation for Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Expressway, and a portion of the Ports to Plains High Priority Corridors and numbering future interstate segments.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your support. Item F, presentation, Blue Dragonfly Brewery by Colin Tony. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I yield the floor to Mr. Colin Tony.
Greetings, Commission members, and Mr. Mestes, and Mr. Hio. I appreciate you being here this evening to hear our presentation. I believe everybody does have a slide packet in front of you. Apologize that PDF is not on the screen. We'll get on through it. I wanted to take you first on a virtual tour of the brewery, of where we are currently, with our equipment, and what we're doing with our processes. The cornerstone of what we're doing, and the reason why I highlight it, is our 32-can-per-minute canning line, because that's actually going to be one of our growth strategies moving into the future, because it provides a lot of flexibility for things that we're currently doing, things that we're planning to do, and then also the possibility of maybe doing some co-packing in the future for other beverage entities. So that's one of the things very proud of that we have, that we were able to secure at a certain point. And I'm sorry, on the second slide, you can't see the cans actually being filled. I had a great shot of them being filled and foaming off, and the next ones coming into line. And another reason why I did want you to be able to have a view of what we're doing, so you can also see that we are actually utilizing the facility for what it was originally intended, based on our LITA agreement. And I would invite any and all of you, and I know Mayor Sigur Cigotin, I know Commissioner Schuster, Commissioner Chatterley, I know that you have all been out there at one time or another before, but please, I do encourage you to come out anytime and view what we're doing. Happy to always show people the brewing process and what we do. And the next slide is basically the view of the canning area, the tanks, the tankage looking west, and then a panoramic view of the brewing area. We have two different brewing systems that we utilize now, based on volume of a particular product that we're brewing. One of them is a three-barrel system or 93-gallon system that we originally started with in 2018 down in Cimarron, and it migrated up and actually did the very first batches in this facility for us. And then our seven-barrel system, which we can also scale up to being able to do up to 600 gallons in fermentation, is our larger system that we utilize, depending on which beer it is and the particular demand for it. We actually, two of our beers that we have that are in particular demand around the state now that I thought were going to be kind of one-off wonders. We have a Dreamsicle IPA, so, and I think most of us are probably old enough to remember that nice confection that we could get at the store that was the orange-covered creamy vanilla treat. And we actually converted that into an India Pale Ale, which is a totally novel idea. And I thought, okay, this is just weird enough. It's going to fall flat on its face. It's actually turned into one of our two top sellers. The other one, which I'm incredibly proud of, as an adopted New Mexican, is our Hatch Chili Amber. Another one that I thought, okay, this is going to be a really weird seasonal beer, and it has just, it's grown legs, and it has run. And it's just, and a lot of it is just our different philosophy and the way that we approach beer. If you go onto the next slide, starting with what we do. So we create innovative beer recipes with traditional styles in mind, but we kind of use our own inflection or ideas, what we'd like to do. It's a point of craft beer in the first place, is because if we all enjoyed pale yellow beer, we'd still be all drinking Coors and Bud, and that's all we would need. And so, you know, the creativity and imagination that we put forth when we put recipes together, I think is probably the funnest part of what I get to do on a day-to-day basis. And then actually taking it out into the public and having people give us positive feedback is another thing that, you know, just registers really well. It tells us we're on the right track with what we do. We do this by sourcing finest ingredients from around the globe to make our recipes stand out. Most of all, the grain we get from Proximity Malt in Montevista, Colorado. Sorry, that's typo. I said San Juan Valley, I meant San Luis Valley. And that is an important part of our story. And I've told people before, even if we could get grain at 10 cents a pound cheaper, we still wouldn't do it. Because I honestly, I believe that's one of our partners that has really gotten us to where we're at with our quality and our quality control, and consistently turning out one great batch after another. That's one of the things we do consider important, is once we get solid partners, we like to stick with them, regardless of, you know, what the ultimate economic impact is within reason. Our yeast and hops, we get from various places around the world. I'm a big believer in using the authentic yeast from where they originate from, like a Kolsch beer, which is another one of our popular yellow beers. That yeast actually originates from Cologne, Germany. Our Oktoberfest strain that we're getting ready to brew later this week, that is the original Oktoberfest strain that comes from Munich, Germany. So I'm particularly proud of things like that, that we don't cut corners and we substitute one thing for another because of inconveniences or whatever. And I will say, I do want to point out that Raton's water is actually some of the very best for being able to brew different styles of beer without doing a lot of heavy pretreatment. Most breweries end up actually stripping their water with an RO system, and then adding back whatever brewing salts they want or particular constituents to the water. We can do everything from pilsners to stouts, and people are just blown away that we don't do any kind of mineral treatment to the water. So thank you, guys, for the great water that we have here. It's really wonderful that we're able to do that, and it minimizes the cost we have going into it. And water truly does shine through in beer, so again, it's a very important ingredient. So moving on, we do manufacture, can, and keg all of our product here at the Raton Brewery Facility at the airport. We self-distribute ourselves in Colfax County, and we have an exciting development that happened starting back in November. We now have a distribution agreement with Fiasco Fine Wine out of Santa Fe. And they are distributing our beers for us in Albuquerque, Santa Fe, and the Taos Markets primarily. And they get a little bit outside of those areas. And we're now roughly four months into the actual program itself. They started ordering from us in April, and it's really starting to take off pretty well for us. So in addition to Raton, you can find us in Angel Fire, Eagle Nest, Springer, Red River, Taos, Los Alamos, and of course Albuquerque and Santa Fe, as I mentioned. And we've also, one of the things we did do this summer is we doubled back down on doing more outside beer events, because it's one thing for a distributor to come in and sell the beer to retail locations. It's up to us to really create the ground game. So we've got to sharpen up our social media skills. We have to get out and actually get our beer in the hands of people. And one of those events we did this weekend, the Santa Fe Beer and Food Festival, was incredibly successful for us. We had a lot of people get the beer in their hands, and so we expect we're going to see our wholesale orders start shooting up appropriately. So we've been very fortunate that Angel Fire also developed their new event center up there. That created some live events, and we were able to go and get our beer out there. And of course, we've got a good presence in Angel Fire already, which that just helps accentuate, you know, any of the additional business afterwards. So, and we're also, one of the things we're doing to help create awareness is with our package store partners, scheduling regular tastings there. So when people come in to buy something, one of my favorite things to do is to kind of grab them to the side, like, you really don't need to buy that until you try this. And we have a pretty good close rate doing that. So fortunately, we do have distribution partners that allow us that opportunity to be able to get out there and do point-of-sale selling. We also do use point-of-sale merchandising, such as metal bar signs. That's been our big buy this year. We found it to be really popular, and it's great, because restaurants and package stores where we're in, we have the signs. I actually sent some down to be sold at the Santa Fe Festival. That went over well, too. So, you know, somebody opens their garage door, their neighbor comes over to have a beer. What's this Blue Dragonfly? Well, here, let me show you. So it's pretty clever. And one of the things I'm very proud of, though, when it comes to Raton, is our tap handles are actually made here in Raton. So, and they're wonderful, they're highly visible, and they're entirely unique. And so I'm very proud that we're able to source local like that, which is one of the things we try to do when and where we can. Because I understand local economies need to be circular, is that we all need to support each other, yet we do need the outside influence, too. Wherever we can, we do try to support local. Something else we're doing to try and grow our business is to cold-call on a weekly basis with prospects. It's not entirely just up to the distributor to go after new accounts. We're more than welcome to go in, do samplings, and get them on board, and then follow up with our distributor. We do go on trips with our distribution reps to be able to tell the story firsthand of the beer and answer any questions during the tastings. And then our logo and our branding, I think it really stands out on store shelves and elsewhere. I mean, I'm so proud of it, I even got it tattooed on me. So let's talk a little bit about our history. So the last time I came before the council, I have to admit, I was really suffering a high level of burnout. We had a really fortuitous event happen for us this last year. A gentleman by the name of Paul May, who was a deputy with the Colfax County Sheriff's Department, finally retired after 34 years of law enforcement duty, or as I say, he got tired of being a human target every day. And I had the great luck of being able to hire him as a part-time bartender at our Cimarron location. And we had reached a point last September that I just, I was really getting tired of the food business that was necessarily a part of the tap room. And so I was starting to think about winding that down. And I asked Paul one day, I said, would you love to learn the brewing business and come up and work with me every day? Because I really didn't know where his mindset was on retirement. And he says, absolutely, I'd love to. And it has really worked into a great daily partnership of somebody who's energized me, put an awful lot of lift under my wings, and shown me the possibilities of things that we can do when I have competent help that is there every day, ready to go, enthusiastic about what they're doing. And he has just completed about a year-long apprentice program, and literally can do about every facet of the business. I've never had anybody that I could truly just allow to run an entire batch of beer, to be able to do packaging or whatever with minimal input from me. So that has been a big relief. And I don't, I hope you sense in my voice and in my demeanor that I'm very excited about what we have going on and what our future looks like, just having that extra little bit in there. So where we started out, we originally started right about this time in 2018, actually August 1, 2018, was the day that we did our soft opening in Cimarron as a humble little brew pub. And I never had any dreams that our beer would go anywhere outside those walls, other than in growlers or in cans or something like that. I never thought that, hey, there'd be a demand to take it elsewhere. Doing enough events and whatnot over time, we learned, hey, there really is some interest in this. And that's why when the city of Raton initially came calling and talking about the possibility of moving the brewery up here, we were at a point that we looked at and said, you know, this actually could make sense. And then, of course, as we know, when we started this, was January 2020, well, then we had a plague set in. And that set everything back by a good margin, because just wasn't as much demand. We didn't have the kind of equipment really to get into packaging and all that at that point. We were trying to survive and to keep our little humble establishment in Cimarron going, keep this going up here. So in April of 2021, by the time the, we were starting to get fewer restrictions in terms of COVID and whatnot, we moved all the production up to Raton, got busy with the tap room in Cimarron, and started working more on outside distribution. We brewed our first batches there in April of 2021. And September of 2021 was another watershed moment for us. That's when we purchased our large system that we're able to brew our larger batches on. And then in July of 2022 is when we bought our larger canning system. In October of 2024, as I mentioned earlier, that's when we decided to exit the retail markets. We closed our Cimarron tap room immediately, or I say permanently, on October 31, which that was a big risk, because the retail aspect of the business, a lot more profitability per glass of beer than selling wholesale cans and whatnot. So I mean, it was a true leap of faith. And just having to believe that, you know, it was good enough to get out there, and somebody would want to pick us up as a distributor, and we started talks with Fiasco in November that year. And then in April, we got our first Fiasco order, and it was about every third or fourth week, now or two, once a week. And I expect at some point, either that volume is going to double or triple, or it'll be several times a week they'll be ordering from us. Now, the craft beer industry does have some headwinds at the moment. Just reading through the trade papers and examining the data from the government, we're shrinking at about 2% to 4%. Last year, we lost 4% in the craft market. It's continued to contract. This is the first time in two decades that more breweries are closing rather than opening. There's a heavy competition. Cannabis, the usage has gone way up with that. It's also considered to be healthier. Ready-to-drink cocktails is another thing that's really popped up in the last five or so years that has cut into craft beer. Canned wine and non-alcoholic beer. That's another very interesting segment of the market, and we'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. And you kind of have to wonder, you know, maybe has craft beer exceeded the consumer attention span? Or is this just simply, maybe these were not as well-funded? Maybe the beer product wasn't as good? And that's the whole thing, is that the people that appreciate craft beer, perhaps they're just kind of choosing between the winners and losers and the ones that aren't as compelling, or aren't as innovative, or falling to the wayside, or maybe weren't as well-funded to handle any kind of downturns in it. Our own personal challenges, so in our gambit, to go from more of a retail base with a little bit of wholesale distribution into strictly a wholesale brewery, is we absorbed about approximately $60,000 loss between November of 2024 and June of 2025, which for our budget is a significant amount. We are venturing into crowded markets with more competition. The process is starting with the distributors. It's a slow process, but as I mentioned, it is starting to accelerate. Of course, it makes me even feel better talking about that, since we got another PO from the day before I came in. So one of the things that we do have a challenge with those are social media. I've always thought myself as being a really good marketing person. Social media is one of my weaknesses. So we need to find either an intern or a part-time employee to be able to pick that up for us, to get regular penetration in the market, hit the right influencers, and help us grow the brand and get the word out there even more and more. One of the other things we need to figure out is a way that we can successfully add a retail element to the brewing facility. And that's something that Cynthia and I have brainstormed on somewhat. I do have a collection of vintage Harleys that I've got up there. It's kind of designed to be eye candy for people to come in. So trying to figure out a way that we can figure out a retail element where it doesn't necessarily involve coming in, buying a glass of beer or something like that, maybe more six-packs to go, growlers to go, packaged to go, is the kind of thing. And those are areas, we just need to get our dartboard out and start working on what those opportunities are and how we can get conversions from people coming and going from the airport, coming and going from the Whittington, people coming and going up Highway 64 if they're not in too big of a hurry to get to where they're going. So those are things we're aware of, and we are definitely working on. And so let's shift over to where we're going from here. And this is the first time I've really had a chance to tell anybody about this. We have attracted the interest of an outside investor from the Midwest who has owned a couple of breweries in the Indianapolis area. He and his wife are, they're nearing the end of their time of having children at home. They're looking to move to the Taos area, possibly open a tap room there. But he's very excited about what we're doing, loves our beers, and loves what I'm looking forward to in terms of other beverages. So we're looking at entering the non-alcoholic beverage market with private-label flavored sparkling waters, horchata, aguafresca products, rebranding as a beverage company. So it'd be Blue Dragonfly Beverage instead of Blue Dragonfly Brewing. In the way of private-label-type sparkling waters, what I mean is we have a lot of different resorts in this state and a lot of tourism traffic. So there are opportunities there with our canning line to be able to do private-label sparkling, like cucumber waters or watermelon water or something like that. And one of the things I'm also really miffed by is that this state really does not have much of a presence of native, native-grown beverage companies that do horchadas or aguafrescas. I wasn't even aware of what an aguafresca was until I'd moved here to the state. And it was actually, it was a form of a beer that New Belgium Brewing was doing that I'd bought somewhere, you know, here at a liquor store in New Mexico. And I thought, my gosh, this is fantastic, you know? Why aren't more people doing this? And so I think that's a way that we can also hedge against the shrinkage in the craft beer market. And so at the same time, the craft beer is shrinking. They're projecting about 2% a year up through 2033. NA beer is projected to grow at 8% a year. So we have actually started the R&amp;D phase of that, learning what all is necessary. It will require additional equipment, capital investment. Pasteurization becomes very important because we don't have the alcohol as a natural preservative against microbes. So those are the things that we're looking into and figuring out the processes. Fortunately, we do have a little pilot batch system that we can literally, we can run three batches a day of different types of beer. We actually have several of our craft beers that could convert very well to an NA type. And it's not the, and the NA beers that I've been trying lately, I was used to before, if you got something that was a near beer, it tasted something like rotted cabbage. And this is not at all what we're getting now in the industry. There's enough interest that there's a lot of ideas developing. And we're excited to be able to get to be a part of leading on that. And for us to get to be the first New Mexico brewery to actually successfully market NA beers would be huge. So I really do see that as a big part of our path of growth forward. We're also looking at the aspect of monetizing our raw material buying power by implementing an online homebrew store onsite and engaging people in the region that are interested in homebrewing. I don't know if any of you are aware that I do have another business, Cimarron Cycle Works, that I have operated for about 25 years. Well, it wasn't Cimarron Cycle Works, I mean, Cimarron, obviously. But I deal in antique Harley-Davidson parts and whatnot. We ship about 10,000 items around the world every year. So I do understand the idea of online item marketing. And that's one of the things I think that we could become a pretty good leader in the homebrew market as well. And we've got the space there that we can work into for that. And then finally, organize my passion for the antique motorcycles into a mini museum onsite to attract visitors and retail sales. That is something Cynthia keeps encouraging me about. And believe me, I hear you in trying to figure out how we're going to go about this. And we are attending more beer-related festivals around the state to complement the distribution system by creating more retail demand, making our brand beers stand out. It also does add a retail element that's very helpful to us as well to help shore up the bottom line. We do have an incredibly unique space that we can utilize for public events such as live music, car and motorcycle shows, swap meets, farmers' flea markets. Overall, that space is six and a half acres out there. So there's a lot of stuff that can be done on the ground. My problem is I think I've been too myopic about how to implement that. I want to engage community partners to implement that because I only have X amount of hours in a day, we all do. And I can only put so much on my plate and hope to successfully do it. And I think that's one of, one of the distinct failures that I wish we would have jumped on sooner, but that's okay. I mean, I'm finally, I'm just honest enough to understand that we really need to find people that are interested. And so through everybody else's, you know, social tentacles here, if anybody knows of somebody who would like to get into doing promoting some events and stuff, this would be a great place to do it. The benefit to us, obviously, would be concession sales and whatnot. To somebody else, it's a very good space to be able to hold different kinds of festivals or events. We, and one of the benefits of that also though is like if we could get some good, two or three good music festivals going, that's necessarily heads and beds in Raton, people eating at restaurants here, seeing what else there is to do in town. So there's very good benefit to it. And as far as there is still room for complimentary-type businesses, somebody could operate a yoga space in their gallery space or hydroponic vegetable operation down in the old gun range portion of it, there's plenty of room for that. And I believe all the resources are there other than the actual equipment to do it. That was one of my original ideas for the space because we knew we wouldn't utilize all of it. And I think that really could be appropriate. And, you know, it helps Raton being a bit of a food desert when it comes to good quality produce. You know, I think that could be a really good benefit. July did mark our first month of profitability since last October when we exited the retail business with our last taproom. We are projecting by the end of the year that we will be showing consistent monthly profit. We're currently supporting one FTE and two part-time employment positions. And that was just recently, we had a bit more of a need for our economic endeavors to hire a second part-time employee. With delving off into non-alcoholic products, we're actually looking at being able to target six to eight full-time positions by 2027 to help implement our entry into the NA beverage market. We're very energized, enthusiastic about our potential and where we can go as well as the interest in our outside investment. And again, I want to invite each and every one of you to please come out, walk through, see the space and ask questions. And if you would love to schedule a time whenever we're canning or brewing so you can see part of the process, that makes me even happier because I love showing people what we do and sharing that with them. Questions, please.
I'll just make a comment. I got to say, from the last time I saw you out at the facility, you look a heck of a lot better and a lot more happy.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You really do.
Thank you.
I mean, I can see a huge difference. When I got back from that thing, I thought, man, I don't know if he's going to make it six months. I'm not trying to be mean or anything.
I understand.
I truly see a huge improvement.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Kudos.
Being surrounded by the right people and having, I think, the right plans going forward makes a big difference. So, yeah.
I really like your ideas for expansion into the non-alcoholic market. Yeah, I'm super excited to see where that goes.
Your capacity as, as you're operating right now, how many gallons and how many, how many cans per gallon?
How many cans per gallon? There's 128 ounces per gallon, so we're right at about 10 cans. Per, we're producing on a given batch, so seven barrels is 217 gallons of finished product and roughly 91, 92 cases of beer, thereabouts. You have a little bit of waste that goes through in the process itself. And we actually split our batches roughly 45% right now is going to cans, 55% to kegs. One of the things that really shocked us with the distributors, we figured canned product would be going bigger at first. And actually, draft started out stripping it right away, and now cans are catching back up. They're still working on getting us into Total Wine and some of the larger retailers in the Albuquerque market. And that'll be a huge thing for us once, once we're finally with Total Wine and some of the other bigger retailers like that.
So like, let's say, for instance, your distribution does hit like Total Wine's market. Do you have enough capacity to be able to?
We do at this point. Part of the idea with the outside investors that as the, as we increase in our demand, then they'll be able to help bring in the equipment so we don't have to actually incur any debt to do that. Yeah, as of right now, we can handle what we're doing, I project, for at least the next six to 12 months. And then at that point, we probably, pardon, will need a little bit larger tankage space. But our canning line will get us pretty far at being able to operate it. And just with beer only, it's 32 cans a minute. If we go with low carbonated product, we can actually go up to about 48 cans a minute or two cases a minute. And I got to tell you, it's hysterical. When we get going, we have, we have three people that have to operate the canning line. If we're going at full song, it looks like the old episode of I Love Lucy where Lucy and Ethel are working in a chocolate factory on the pack-off end of it because, you know, trying to get the pack techs on them, get them into the cases, get them onto the pallet. It's pretty interesting. And I get to just stand at the front and adjust the controls and make sure we're not overfilling, underfilling, that kind of thing. So, yeah, it's pretty entertaining.
Is there enough capacity in your brewing to warrant two lines, two canning lines?
Possibly so. The cool thing is about the canning line we have can actually be expanded to two lanes on the, on the exact unit that we're already using, which is fantastic because you're looking at about a $15,000 to $20,000 modification instead of a $200,000 investment in it. So we, we're fortunate that we've got that. A lot of the stuff that we've done, we've actually done it with the idea of what will we be doing five years from now? Because a little bit of the background on where I got interested in craft brewing in the first place is I sold boilers for a very long time for a company out of Tulsa, continued to sell for them until I retired in 2021. And I started selling to craft breweries in 2006. And people would ask me, what size boiler do I need? I said, well, how big do you want to be in five years? Because we're just comparing what's the cost of putting in the equipment, the installation, the bare equipment cost itself, the certifications and everything, the licensing that goes into replacing it. And so that's kind of the philosophy that I've used as we've gone along is that we've overshot a bit here and there. And we still do have our small hand canner that we started with that is painstakingly slow, but that will always have a place for us, especially in terms of our R&amp;D as we get more into the NA products. And being able to take something, we just want to do a short run-up and take it to our distributor and say, could you sell this? So we do have that as well. So it's not like we have to fire up the big machine to run off 12 cans because trust me, that'd be a real pain.
Just a side note there. Do you have an idea what the traffic count is on 64 in front of Darby?
I honestly have no idea. And I know, obviously, it shifts between our shoulder seasons and summer and winter. And, you know, Philmont season, obviously, there's a lot of 12 in Philmont plus, you know, everybody going up country. But I really don't know what the count's are. Do we have any kind of highway data that we could glean?
We'd probably get you to set a counter out there.
Yeah. That'd be interesting to know. I will say.
You mentioned retail stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, traffic count's either going to make you or break you.
Right. Oh, absolutely. And in this case, it's just how focused for people on their trip? And then, you know, what can we talk the highway department into for possibly some signage to get people in? But we've, we've made it as intuitive as we can. We've got three white old dairy tanks out there. Two of them have brewery on it, and one has our logo plastered on it. We've got the logo on the building. We did try a billboard on I-25, and we even got almost a year's free rent out of it. And we never really got many people that dropped in with the billboard out there. So I'm not sure exactly how close to it it needs to be, how much of an impulse it is to turn in, or is it just simply, let's take advantage of who are the people that are camped out at the Whittington Center? Who are the people that are camped out in hotels here? Because when, now, this is one of the things that does happen, is we might get somebody that'll call up to the brewery and say, hey, I'm in town for a couple of days. I just had your beer at Bruno's Pizza or K-Bobs or wherever. Can we come out to the brewery and buy it? Oh, absolutely. So, you know, if there's a way we can set the hook with hotels, something like that, or maybe we will start utilizing the Raton Visitor Guide a bit more for that. And then, and I think also maybe as a side attraction of the mini motorcycle museum, I have an awful lot of motorcycle ephemera. If there's a way that I could organize into cases and whatnot that would, would help really attract that and keep people in there for an extended period, I do believe. So those are things that we, you know, really need to sit down. And I'm going to start taxing Cynthia again with ways to implement some of these ideas and help me organize it. Because I'm, I'm a big-picture-type person. But again, you know, I get all these ideas going, then I realize, okay, I have these time limitations. So it's figuring out who can I bring in to the fold and have us help with how we best utilize such things or even figuring out ways that, to monetize those things that I haven't even dreamed of before.
So like the non-alcoholic stuff, you mentioned pasteurization.
Yes.
Is there enough space in that building to be able to do that?
So this is interesting. I'd initially looked, had kind of ignored the idea of NA beer until I started reading online about other breweries that are actually using existing equipment they have, like their mash tun, to do their batch pasteurization in. All we would have to do in a case like that is fabricate a stainless basket, perforated basket, that we can lift in and out with a forklift and heat it for the given amount of time, get the PU's that we want out of it, and then pull it back out. And then it can go back off to be, you know, packaged on with the pack techs and cased and all that. So we actually do have the room to do that because it necessarily, to start anyway, we can utilize what we have. Now, down the line, we could do some shifting around. We certainly could, could work with it. I think the idea of buying a $100,000, $200,000 batch or a pasteurization tunnel, that's probably a three- or four-year type, you know, forward look. Yeah. But for now, we can batch pasteurize for what we have.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
I hope we haven't gone on too long. I know it can get long-winded when I get excited about things.
This has been very informative and glad to see you got things going in the right direction.
Thank you for the trust in leasing your building. And I do appreciate that and for being patient through our lean times and points where I was feeling a little beat down and whatnot. And I really do appreciate everything you guys have done for us. You've been fantastic landlords. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, moving on. Item G, deliberate and act on Raton Public Service Company Board of Trustees Appointment. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a reappointment of Commissioner Cy Treheo to the Raton Public Service Board of Trustees. This appointment will ensure continued effective governance of public utility services to the city. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this section.
Questions, comments? Mr. Treheo is here. Cy, is this your first term as a trustee?
This is my first term as a trustee. I've been appointed by Mr. Swanson prior to finish out his term as an appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Cy Treheo for the Raton Public Service Company Board of Trustees.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Item H, deliberate and act on Extraterritorial Zoning Commission Board Appointment. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the proposed appointment to the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission Board of Michael Peis and Randy Madison. This appointment is necessary to maintain representation on the board that oversees zoning matters in the area surrounding the city. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on these two appointments.
And these two currently are on the board, correct? Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the two board appointments for the ETC board.
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate and act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations. We have one, the MHMR production for the Raton Supercross. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board to fund the MHMR productions in the amount of $6,000 for the Raton Supercross event. The board believes this event will bring increased tourism and economic activity to the city, and the city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this item.
Questions, comments?
This does bring people to town, but I'm disappointed they changed their logo.
I didn't know that they changed their logo, but.
They used to have a mouse writing on it. I know it was cute. I will move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Any further discussion?
I was just curious. It looks like they're, usually on the application, you can see other, you know, money they're putting in or, and it looks like Colfax County is sponsored in part with Lodger's Tax on this as well. Do we have any information on the other funding sources they're using or?
We've had a couple of sponsors, but it's mostly in-kind, not financial. And we actually don't have the meeting for the county one until the end of this month.
Okay, so you're still waiting on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, all in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on certification of corrections to budget and adjustment-supporting schedules. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a certification of corrections to the budget and adjustment-supporting schedules. These corrections ensure that the city's financial records are up to date and accurately reflect the necessary changes. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this.
Questions, comments? Mike Land, do you have anything to say? It's pretty straightforward.
If there's any questions, I tried to detail it out for you in the memo. I've also attached a corrected recap for your budget binder. It occurred in the Fund 207. So you'll recall when we approved the fourth quarter end-of-year report, our ending cash, reconciled ending cash balances roll forward to become the beginning balances of the budget. So I didn't discover that till I keyed everything in the LGBMS system. So I wanted to make sure that the supporting schedules that you have reflect what was submitted to DFA. I did get approval yesterday of the fourth quarter report, but we're still awaiting the final approval of the budget. So that should be coming here fairly soon. And then the other one occurred, as you know, when we do budgets, I'm sorry, budget adjustments, the transfers in and out have to equal. And so we were missing a line that had the corresponding transfer of the funds coming out of the general fund into the line item for the animal shelter project that had an outstanding reimbursement at the end of the fiscal year. So we just went ahead and put that in LGBMS, but we had to have a balanced entry. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention so our file will have the corrected schedule with the reservation. We apologize for that.
Any other motion?
Certification of corrections to budget and adjustment-supporting schedules.
Second? Oh. Okay, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the corrections to the budget. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on Code 3 service proposal for communications, radio equipment, parts, accessories, and related services for the Raton Fire Department vehicle outfitting utilizing state price agreement number 10000000200048. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the proposed, is the proposal from Code 3 service for communications, radio equipment, and related services for the Raton Fire Department vehicle outfitting. This proposal will help equip the department with necessary communication tools, ensuring effective operation and safety for emergency responders. The amount is $50,576.66 paid from the fire protection funds. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this item.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the Code 3 service proposal for the communications. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further questions?
Does this include travel for them coming here to do the installation or they have to take vehicles there?
The vehicles have to go there to be outfitted.
And there is where?
Albuquerque.
They're located in Albuquerque.
It's Russian Albuquerque.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure it's Albuquerque.
Any other questions? We have motion and a second. We have motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, deliberate an act on Frontline Uplifting LLC Estimate for the Installation of Lights, Bumper, Toy Box and Siren for the Raton Fire Department Vehicle Outfitting Utilizing State Price Agreement Number 20000002100030. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the estimate from Frontline Uplifting LLC. This upgrade will improve the visibility and functionality of fire department vehicles. The amount of $70,719.85 is paid from the fire protection funds. The city recommends you vote in affirmative.
Which vehicle is this for?
These are the new vehicles, correct? Michaeline?
Yes, so the two new Yukons.
Okay.
And then going back to the radio proposal from Code Three, they're actually going to be ordering these radios so that when they do the police department radio upgrade, they'll do all of this at the same time. So I apologize if I had to look at that a little bit closer.
So I guess to that point, those police units have to go to Albuquerque or they're coming here?
No, so the $250,000 grant that we received for the radio upgrade for police dispatch, this is going to integrate with that project is what I understood.
But the vehicles would still got to go to Albuquerque.
The vehicles would have to go to the outfitter, yes.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Frontline Uplifting LLC for the installation of the listed item. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item M, deliberate an act on Maintenance Agreement Number 4101691 for signals, intersection and roadway lighting between City of Raton and the New Mexico Department of Transportation. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a maintenance agreement number 4101691 between City of Raton and New Mexico Department of Transportation. This agreement outlines responsibilities for maintaining traffic signals, intersection and roadway lighting for the city, especially focusing on the I-25 Clayton Road Project. There is no dollar amount associated with this item, and the city recommends you vote in affirmative on this.
And again, this is in line with what we're doing currently on Main Street since it is a highway.
I had a question, if I may. I understand, obviously, the electrical energy and maintenance, but I was curious about in the first part, communication, what does, what they're requiring of us. Is there some kind of? On page two.
My guess would be something wasn't wrong.
Paragraph which number?
Right under B, the public entity shall number one. Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, like, is that requiring some kind of wireless or fiber or something, or is that just communication of the signal itself?
I think it's just in communication for the signal itself. I'd have to look deeper into that.
I believe once upon a time we had a CenturyLink drop of a standard phone line for communication on the Second Street corridor. Not sure if that's still active. They haven't made it clear to us that we have to have an internet bill or anything like that on it, but it is still only a 60% design.
Because it's also the department, it's kind of vague as to who's on the hook.
Doing the, yeah, who's paying for the communication or whatever that might be. That, that, I mean, the rest of it seems pretty standard, and I'm assuming we have this agreement for other signals.
And to Jason's point, I've seen them plug their handset into that one on Second Street.
No, we still do pay CenturyLink for that line.
It's going to be something similar to that on that.
I think that allows them to fix some of these problems. We have a power outage relatively because when we're waiting for them to come back, it takes a couple days, but it's pretty similar. RPS will change signal heads, stuff like that. RPS, both John D. and Dave, they're cool with it. We have a minor change on the speed, the spectrum of the street lighting to 4,000K to match what we have the rest of town, and other than that, everybody thinks it's normal.
Any other question about RPS? Thank you.
Any other questions?
I will move to approve the maintenance agreement number 4101691 for signal, signals intersection and roadway lighting between City of Raton and MDOT.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, deliberate an act on Recommendation of Award for the Green Waste Grinding Professional Services Contract. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the recommendation for the award of a Green Waste Grinding Professional Services Contract. This contract will ensure that the city has a contractor to manage and process green waste, contributing to the cleanliness and sustainability of Raton. The amount of this section is $51,422 paid through the City Environment GRT Fund. The city recommends you vote in the affirmative on this section.
Questions, comments?
I'd love to give some props to the transfer station and this project because, I mean, I don't know if people even understand how awesome it is that you can just go and, and take so many different things over there, and it's so easy and everyone's very friendly. So I appreciate all, all that's going on.
Sometimes they help you out when they're not even there.
I'll make a motion to approve the award for the Green Waste Grinding Professional Services Contract to Rocky Top Resources.
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item O, deliberate an act on Estimate for Mozart LLC for the Water Heating System at Kearney School Utilizing State Price Agreement Number 30000002300084. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is an estimate for Mozart Limited Liability Corporation for the installation of a water heating system at Kearney School. The system will provide reliable and energy-efficient hot water to the school, ensuring a comfortable environment for the facility. The amount is $24,899.41 paid through the EDA grant. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this item.
I believe it was stated here, this does not include materials? We have an idea of what materials might be and what we're looking at there.
If I may, Mayor and Commissioner, the range that we were given was somewhere in the range of if it's an easy fix and minimal materials are needed, minimal leaks need to be repaired, we're looking at maybe around the $15,000 range, but it's possible that once we get in there, if the air handler units need extensive materials, it could be as high as something more along the lines of $60,000, which the, this not to exceed price gives us a comfortable amount of working space, but there is the possibility that a change order might be needed depending on what he finds out as he goes, gets in and starts troubleshooting. However, it's significantly less expensive than the million dollars or whatever it, it costs to replace all the systems, and so we took the commission's recommendation to move down this path, and so that's what it costs to get started.
Okay, was that boiler drank?
I don't know the answer to that, but when we went and inspected it, we didn't see any evidence of any leaks at the time, and they charged up the water to the building, and it, it charged and stopped and held right away. So, so far, we've had positive signs that even when Will went through and inspected everything with me to get, to put this proposal together, he said that for the most part, everything looks like it's in good shape and that he's confident that he'll be able to get it back up and going.
Because when the school transferred that to the city, did the city turn all the utilities off to it, or did they maintain the heat in it?
No, the gas has been off for 10 years, and so the, that's a part of what Will's going to have to do is anything, anytime gas in a line has been off for more than five years, it has to be recertified, and so Will's going to have to do that as a part of this work.
Any other questions?
I will move to approve the estimate from Mozart LLC for the Water Heating System at Kearney School Utilizing State Price Agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item P, deliberate an act on out-of-state travel for the 2025 Port to Plains Alliance Conference for Mayor Pro Tem Laurie Chatterley. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a request for out-of-state travel for Mayor Pro Tem Laurie Chatterley to attend the 2025 Ports to Plains Alliance Conference. That's in Lubbock, right? This conference offers opportunities to connect with stakeholders on regional development and infrastructure issues. The estimated cost of travel is $722.82 paid through the Commission Travel Line Item of the General Fund. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this action.
Questions, comments?
I will abstain from this item, but just to note that I will not be attending the last day. I will just go down Tuesday for the board meeting and opening, and then Wednesday is the main conference, and if I have my days right. And then Thursday is kind of the morning wrap-up and then some tours, so I'm going to come back Wednesday night to stay with.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Entertain the motion.
I will move to approve the out-of-state travel for the 2025 Ports to Plains Alliance Conference for the Mayor Pro Tem.
One second. Motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? I'm going to hold you to that 82 cents.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item Q, deliberate an act on voting delegate and alternate for the 2025 New Mexico Municipal League 68th Annual State Conference. This will be held September 18th is the business meeting, but the week starts like generally on Tuesday and runs through Friday. It'll be in Ruidoso, New Mexico. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the proposed appointment of voting delegate and alternate for the 2025 New Mexico Municipal League 68th Annual State Conference. This appointment is necessary to ensure the city's representation at the conference where important legislative and policy matters are discussed. This should be pretty easy because I think only two of you are going.
Yeah, I want to be in Indiana on those dates, so.
Do you want to be the delegate or the alternate? Because I don't, I don't care.
I don't care either. You want to flip a coin? I've almost always been the delegate.
Your city manager is broke.
Lindy's been the delegate, we can let her be the delegate.
That's great.
If that's all right with you guys.
I'll make a motion that Lindy be the delegate and I be the alternate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Mayor Pro Tem as the alternate and Commissioner Schuster as the voting delegate. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item R, deliberate an act on inmate confinement agreement between the County of Colfax and the City of Raton. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is proposed inmate confinement agreement between Colfax County and the City of Raton. This agreement outlines the terms and conditions for housing inmates at the city jail, ensuring a formal, actually, that should be the county jail, ensuring formal arrangements between the two entities. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this.
I believe this is still at the $170 a day, is what I read.
I'll make a motion to approve the inmate confinement agreement between the city and Colfax County. One second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item S, deliberate an act on dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your package is your dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County. The agreement ensures the continuity of dispatch services for emergency response between city and county agencies. It looks like the sum of $75,000 is the amount this year. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this.
Any questions, comments?
No, it's pretty standard.
Pretty standard.
Yep. Also, I'll move to approve the dispatch agreement in City of Raton and Colfax County.
Motion and a second to approve the dispatch agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item T, deliberate an act on quote from Enchanted Technology Solutions LLC for tough books and mounts for the Raton Police Department utilizing state price agreement number 10000000200048. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and your, Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a quote from Enchanted Technology Solutions Limited Liability Corporation for the purchase of tough books and mounts for the Raton Police Department. This agreement will enhance the department's ability to respond to calls and manage data effectively while in the field. The total amount is $106,151 for computers and mounts to be paid from, from the general fund reserves. The city recommends you vote in the affirmative on this item, and again, this is a follow-up from the previous one where Microsoft did us wrong.
Right, right. They're no longer supported.
Yep.
Any further discussion, questions?
Well, it looks like in this thing, they are coming to Raton to put these in.
Is it mileage?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, they will come to do these.
Our department didn't struggle on their vendor.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Enchanted Technology Solutions for the tough books and mounts for the RPD. Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item U, deliberate an act on execution of city manager option year two contract renewal from October 1, 2025 to September 30, 2026. If you all recall, we did have a review of Mr. Mestes back, and this is just the annual renewal of the contract if we want to keep the guy around.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the option year two contract renewal for the city manager extending the contract from October 1, 2025 to September 30, 2026. Option year two means that I'm starting year three. This renewal ensures continuity of leadership, and this is your only chance to get rid of me for another year.
Questions or comments?
It's not in our packet, but I think we all, yeah, it didn't make it, but I think we all have seen this.
The contract.
Oh, the contract.
I think we're pretty, pretty good on this. I'll make a motion to approve the execution of the city manager option year two contract renewal from October 1, 2025 to September 30, 2026.
Surprise is coming up.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions or comments? I would just say that, Mr. Mestes, you're, you're moving along. You're doing good things for the city, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. All right, Desiree, since this is a contract with the city manager, you better take your own call, bro.
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
You're here for another year. Item V, city manager report. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, bottom line up front, a total of 95 employees from the city, water department and RPS participated in sexual harassment prevention, workplace bullying and violence training provided by the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund last Wednesday. It was very good training, and we'll have them up for more training during the next few months. And mentions and dispatches, a shout-out to Chief Anthony Burke for his oversight of the training last week and essentially pulling it all together. The treasurer, now that the budget has been submitted, she's now preparing for our annual audit. Public works has spent an extensive amount of time cleaning sediment from streets and restoring capacity in storm drainage system after the recent heavy rains. In addition, new park benches have been installed at Veterans Park. The police have been interviewing for a new administrative support person and hope to announce... new administrative support person and hope to announce that selection shortly. The fire department is currently recruiting for three vacancies. In engineering, Jaden Wealth, Cynthia Molina attended EPA Brown Field Conference in October. From all indications, it was a successful trip. The city clerk will be approving all information posted on city property. This includes outside organizations wanting to inform the public activities. If you need anything posted, please contact the city clerk. With economic development, Cynthia Molina has been in training with ZoomInfo, which is a business-to-business intelligence platform that provides comprehensive data with insights to help companies facilitate targeted outreach, accelerate business growth. And finally, my closing thoughts, two weeks ago from today is the deadline to file for the upcoming city commission election. We have a primer for you here, if you're interested. This kind of explains the commission manager form of government and what commissioners do, what the city does, and, you know, we encourage you, if you're interested in working with the city in any way, to pick one of these up. Public service is not always easy. In fact, you will be, from time to time, disliked. You have to have the courage to be disliked. Having the courage to be disliked means being willing to stand by your values, even if it means not everyone will agree with you. In public service, that kind of courage is essential. You're not always going to make popular decisions, but sometimes the right choice isn't the easy one. Whether it's enforcing tough policies or challenging the status quo, serving the public often means putting the greater good ahead of a person's approval or public opinion. It's about doing what's right, not what's popular, and trusting that people will come to understand your intentions over time. It's not always comfortable, but that's how real change happens. And again, this is just a nice little primer. I encourage anybody who's interested in any city business at all to pick this up, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments before we close tonight? Commissioner Honeyfield.
I have one. If we could possibly, the city's properties that we have scattered around here, if we could, we, especially on Main Street, what I'm also hoping, if we maintain the Alpertel site, maybe that might shame the post office into doing something. I understand Rotary Club's cleaned it up twice, and the management hasn't taken any of it.
I will get on that. I think we need to be good stewards as well.
I would say, on that note, we have one department that probably needs more personnel, and that's Public Works.
Any other comments, Commissioner? Mayor Pro Tem?
Ironically, I was going to thank the community members who are keeping up their yards, because with all the rain, and, you know, we get yelted due, I know with the heat, we have to let our grass grow a little bit, and then as soon as we got some rain, cut it again, but I just really appreciate everyone taking care of their properties and encourage our city to do the same.
And I have none, so this meeting is adjourned.